Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, September 26, 2018, to order. Can we have a roll call, please? Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. And the meeting has been properly posted. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is community comment. Do we have any community comment tonight? Please come up to the microphone and state your name and address, please. Hi.
My name is Anya Beckman, and the address would be 5433 West Franklin Transport Field Franklin.
You can have a seat if you want, if you're more comfortable. Hi.
So, I keep hearing a lot about, or a lot of rumors about this two-person house that is supposed to take effect next year at the middle school. And I was wondering if we could get a little more information about this because at this point, I'm not sure if the parents are properly educated about this, and I would hate for rumors to go in the wrong direction and cause a lot of problems that might not even be there. From what I have heard, I have some concerns that teachers who are not properly trained in some subjects might have to teach those subjects. And I know that, for example, other school districts have tried the concept, if I understood it correctly, and are going away from that. And so I would just like to understand which thought process sparked that idea and what the thought is behind it.
Well, this is not an agenda topic for this evening, but I can understand your concern. And Dr. Miller, can you at least address when there might be a communication to parents? And then can we get your phone number to Dr. Miller so she can contact you and talk to you about it?
Sure, absolutely. Sure. Most definitely, we want to give you the information that you're asking for. We do have a plan to communicate more about what's happening with the opening of the new school, including this aspect. So I don't have an exact date in which that communication would be conveyed, but at this point, I would recommend that you contact Mr. Chris Reuter to my right. He's the Director of Instruction, and he can answer every question you ask tonight.
Okay.
And he will gladly do that. But that communication to parents as a whole will be going out soon. It's hard to believe we're only in the fourth week of school. You know, we're very much aware of everyone's desire to know more, and we're working on it.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I will let you know some of what you are talking about is rumors, so I understand how you want to get that cleared up. And Mr. Reuter, would you give?
Yep. Join me back.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Is there any other comment tonight? All right.
Thank you very much. Item five is consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. Nielsen? Motion by Mr., second by Mr. Nielsen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is school board announcements. Do we have any announcements tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to item seven, school board calendar. We have a regular Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, October 10th, here at the Education and Community Center at 6:00 PM, and a regular Board of Education meeting here on October 24th, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. Item eight, reports, presentations, and other school business, school board business. Item AA, the coherence plan presentation, Mr. Cohen.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'll be joined tonight in this report by Ms. Elihausen, Mr. Reuter, and Mr. Fekler. I invite Mr. Fekler up to the table. As we get the technology set up, we'll be projecting.
Can I ask, are you going to wait for questions at the end?
Yeah, so we'll get through the information, and then if we, we'll certainly reserve time at the end for questions. Okay. All right. So in August, you had an opportunity to hear from Dr. Miller and District Administration regarding the coherence plan, and the work that had occurred last spring, last school year, and then throughout the summer to get that three-year coherence plan into the state that it's in now. And you heard us kind of highlight within that coherence plan what the team and the district had identified as our core values, as well as within our three priority areas of better place to learn, a better place to work, and part of a better community, what some of our strategic goals and metrics to measure the impact of those goals and strategies to achieve those goals were going to be, not just for the duration of that three-year coherence plan, but also throughout this school year, in terms of where we wanted to be as a district, in order to achieve that vision of getting better. Within that, then, tonight, we wanted to provide you a 45-day update in terms of the strategies and the specific action steps that we have been taking or have taken since we had that last conversation about the plan, to update you on our progress as we work towards achieving those coherence plan goals. So tonight, you're going to hear from all of us about some of those steps that we've As you heard in August, our overall improvement efforts and our philosophy of continuous improvement really is grounded in us being able to answer these five questions. The question of who are we is best addressed by our mission, vision, and the core values that are inherent in the coherence plan. And you'll hear tonight about some work we've done to start to embed those core values in a real strategic way throughout the district, as well as work that will be coming down the road to continue to ground us in those values. The other four questions really live in the goals themselves, the strategies that we're going to use to execute and achieve those goals, and then the metrics we've identified to measure our progress. And again, we'll be highlighting those this evening. This was the work that the coherence planning team started, again, last spring, and that the administrative team continued to refine throughout the summer. Our premise around continuous improvement really is a fairly simple and straightforward one, and that is, if we as a district, in kind of all of our efforts, utilize high-leverage instructional or improvement strategies that yield specific measurable outcomes that will continuously improve towards our mission. And so we want to, again, be very strategic in our approach, and we want to continue to measure our progress so that we can make adjustments as needed as we work towards getting better daily and achieving the goals of the coherence plan. Another important aspect of improvement that we highlighted in August and that I wanted to highlight again is the idea of alignment. That not only do we have a three-year coherence plan that all of our efforts need to be aligned back to, but that as we start to back that down all the way to the student level, ideally we would see that alignment pull all the way through. So we have a three-year district coherence plan, we also have an annual district scorecard, again, both of those things we talked about in August. And a lot of the work since then, since the start of the school year, has centered on this third one, the one in the middle, annual school or departmental scorecard development. So the idea that we can have district vision and district goals and district strategies, but those really need to be executed at the building level and within our district departments, such as building grounds, business services, IT. And so I'll talk in a little bit about some of the work that those teams have been doing to align their improvement efforts, again, back to the coherence plan and to our annual scorecard. Ideally, then, we would also align our teacher goals back to those building or departmental plans, and then back to the district plan. And then our students down the road would also be setting goals that align back to their teacher's goals for them in terms of their learning, as well as the building, and then again, the district. As we look ahead to this year, we've really chosen to emphasize these highlighted areas. This is kind of a refined way of doing our work as a district. We haven't had a coherence plan in place, and so we wanted to go slow to go fast in terms of our alignment efforts. And while we certainly want to see alignment push all the way down to the student level, and there will be some aspect of alignment down to the student level, these are the three areas we wanted to make sure there was real intentional alignment to this year. And so as you hear about some of the action steps we've taken from some of my colleagues this evening, you're going to really see these areas highlighted, that we're working on that alignment between the district plan, the three-year plan, the one-year plan, and then our buildings and departments throughout the district. The work of improvement doesn't live with any singular person. It's done really in the work of teams that come together, teams of professionals, who work to identify areas of improvement and then collaborate to define the actions we're going to take to get better as a district. And so these are really the four core principles of improvement that we leverage back to when we think about our improvement teams at the building level and at the departmental level. And those four themes can best be summed up as collaboration between team members and the broader group they represent, kind of first and foremost. So you have, at the building level and within departments, these smaller teams of individuals who are working collaboratively with administration or with departmental leaders, and they're really representing the voice of the larger group. So, for example, in an elementary school, you might have a team of six to eight teachers and/or school psychologists or other professionals alongside the principal, who are working to represent the voice of that bigger school in terms of their improvement planning efforts. And those teams have popped up really throughout the district. I think I had highlighted in my report that was posted on Board Docs, so far, we've had over 120 different individuals throughout the district commit to and participate in some of those improvement team efforts. And so we have a wide range of voices representing the entire district in that work. The second theme or kind of operating principle of these teams is focused on really setting the leadership vision for that building or department in alignment back to the coherence plan. So as Franklin High School, for example, goes about the work of improvement, they're setting a goal, they're identifying strategic actions to achieve that goal, they're monitoring that goal, and all of that work aligns back to the coherence plan. Okay? So their job, their role as a team, is really to collaborate, to set that vision for how is the building going to align, what is the work they're going to do to help improve that building or that site. The third principle is really related to frequent monitoring and adjustment. You know, there have been times in the past where we've set annual goals, we've monitored annual goals, and then we've kind of reset that process in August. This work is really about, in these short cycles of 45 to 90 days, what are the next actions we're going to take? So for example, between now and December, what are the actions a particular department or building is going to take to try to achieve a goal? And then they're going to monitor the impact of that and then make adjustments throughout the year, rather than wait for kind of the end of the school year to say, "Well, we hope we've achieved our goal, now let's make adjustments as we move into the next year." So it's a more iterative process. The fourth aspect of these teams really relate back to that modeling of improvement tactics and principles for the rest of the building. So the idea that we're going to operate with a certain set of processes, and we're going to use a certain set of tools as an improvement team, and then we're going to model that work in that way of thinking for all of the other members of our school or department who aren't on that team. So this really is a group of leaders, again, who serve as that voice for the broader group, but also then model that back so that other teachers and other employees can use these tactics and tools as they're working with other individuals and collaborating around the process of improvement. As we've kind of adapted to this concept of a coherence plan and really started to shape our thinking around improvement, it was important to us that we reached out for some assistance in areas that we felt were opportunities for growth for us as not just a leadership team, but as a district as a whole. And there are, luckily for us, some partners in the area who have done this work and are doing this work in other school districts that were available to assist us in some of the things that we're doing as we work to continue to align the coherence plan and grow our capacity as leaders around the work that we're doing in terms of improvement. And so the first group that we've partnered with and will be partnering with throughout the year is Studer Education Group. Studer Education Group is based in Pensacola, Florida, but they were, they got their start in Janesville, Wisconsin. And they're currently working with over 80 districts across the country and 30 districts right here in Wisconsin around the concept of improvement. Their primary focus is helping us build a culture of excellence, and they've given us already and will continue to provide assistance in the form of mentorship and coaching for us as a district around plan alignment and development, leadership tactics we can use to make sure that that coherence plan is coming alive, and helping us develop that culture of improvement that we know we need to do the hard work of improvement on a daily basis. That image is of Melissa Matarazzo, who is our specific Studer coach, who was here in the summer and will be coming back in October to work with us as a leadership team again. The second partner that we've identified and that we've started to work with here in September is Waukesha County Technical College Corporate Training Center. They also work with a number of school districts and help us focus on those tools and tactics related to the principles of improvement, specifically in the areas of developing and working with and sustaining high-performing teams, doing root cause analysis as we try to analyze problems or areas of improvement within the district that we want to get to the root cause of. And then they help us overall with improvement tools and tactics, and again, provide some specific training for us and our leaders as we set about doing that work. And so these are, you know, just opportunities for us to build our own leadership capacity and grow as a district with some outside support as we continue to do the good work of the coherence plan. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, who are going to walk you through, again, the three-year goal and annual scorecard goal within each area of better place to learn, better place to work, and part of a better community. And then they're going to highlight for you some of the specific actions we've taken in the last 45 days to help move forward the plan.
Thanks, Nick. Good evening, everyone. As we shared at the board retreat a few months ago, one of the key areas of our coherence plan is better place to learn, and we have two goals within that band, within that lane. The first one around student engagement, as I've shared previously and Nick has shared previously, students in grades five through 12 in the district participate in October annually on the Gallup Student Engagement Poll, and they self-report around nine key questions on their level of engagement within the school community, not just classroom, but totality of the school day and the school environment and community. We currently, as a district, our composite score is 47% of students in grades five through 12 last fall reported being actively engaged. We shared with you that we want to increase that level, obviously, and with working with Gallup, we know that a three-year increase annually is a pretty aggressive goal. We're looking to, over the next three years, increase our percentage from 47% to 57%. So it'd be an annual increase of 3% across the district. Now, again, that's a composite mean score across the district. We do have some buildings that are in the 70s. Pleasantview is one of our buildings that is, students report high levels of engagement. And as I've shared in the past, we see at the secondary level, engagement starts to decline at the middle and high school years. So we're working as a, oops, Nick, you have the clicker today, as a leadership team on some key aspects of engagement. So our school improvement teams, as Nick has mentioned, have been meeting over the last two weeks, and they're looking at that goal and looking specifically at data and root cause analysis of what that looks like in their building and how they're going to increase those numbers or sustain in areas that they already have high levels of engagement, looking at question analysis of that actual poll and looking at the data behind it, and what are they doing that may be increasing levels of engagement, but also what are the barriers that are in place, or what are the hindrances that might cause a student to feel disengaged? So teams are still developing those action plans, and we're reporting back from a building level to the director team as we look at, to Nick's point, the cascading and alignment of those school improvement efforts across the system. And this Friday, actually, is one of those days where teachers come, but students don't come. We have a professional development day. You'll see on this slide, as well as the, for goal number two, we're engaging in district-wide professional development on student feedback across the system, regardless if you teach kindergarten or AP Calc, you'll be engaged in the same type of learning around the high-yield strategies and the research behind student feedback. A lot of John Hattie, who's a guru of research in the field of education, one of the highest impactful strategies or areas of effectiveness to improve student academic outcomes is how we provide feedback to students. You think about all of us, how do you get better? Someone appreciates the work you do, someone through validation, someone coaches you and helps you understand what you're not seeing, and then they evaluate you on clear expectations and outcomes. So as a district, we're going to engage in that work throughout the year. Our principal team will be facilitating that work with some of the design coming from me in collaboration with the principals to help set that baseline of understanding and knowledge across the district so that we can build on that year after year. And as well as understanding engagement, we have to understand the research behind it. And as I mentioned, teams are looking at their own individual data, but as a district leadership team, we're starting the process of developing our own research base and understanding curriculum we adopt, our teaching practices, those teacher moves, how we're providing feedback, those types of venues of day-to-day interaction with students. What are we doing that's working? And what are some new learning that we have to engage in? And what are some things maybe we have to stop doing that might be hindering or putting those barriers in place that are causing levels of engagement to drop as kids go, progress through the grade levels? Our second area in the better place to learn lane is around academics, and as you know, we've talked extensively at this table about college and career readiness and what that means. And our three-year goal is really improving at the high school level, 12th grade students, and I shared briefly with you at our retreat around what the college and career readiness indicators are and what that means in Franklin Public Schools. We want to improve our efforts from 67.8% of last year's 12th grade students to 80% in three years of graduating seniors are college and career-ready based on our district indicators. And then at the elementary and middle school level, we're really focusing on proficiency and advanced scoring in both literacy and math, and improving that percentage of students that are proficient and/or advanced from 40.9% to 61%. And then at the elementary level, at the end of fifth grade, 57.2% to 75%. You can see on the right in that annual goal, those incremental movements at each of the three various levels in order to get to that three-year goal outcome. So again, some of the key action steps that have taken place in the last couple of months since we last spoke to you, we know that we do have some inequity in the district when we think about understanding course progressions, understanding access for all, and what that looks like. So as a district leadership team through the Austin Network, which is the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators, we've developed a district team that is going through at Equity Academy. One of the first actions is we're going to be doing an equity audit of the district, just understanding our demographics and how we're serving them or not serving them, and better understand what actionable steps we can take through our already existing processes to improve the equitable experience. We're also then, again, talking about feedback and understanding that, reflecting and applying that work daily within our classrooms, but understanding that baseline level of research and actionable steps for teachers and administrators as we continue through this three-year journey of our coherence plan. And Friday afternoon, after teachers have a riveting day of understanding feedback and growing as professionals, they'll be going back to their buildings. And principals, along with the school improvement teams that Nick spoke to, those teacher leader teams, they'll be unveiling their building coherence plan and what that looks like for this year, and that teachers will better understand the building goal and how it aligns back to the two goals that I just shared, and their stake and role in it. Then they'll have time to work with either their grade-level peers in their buildings or their, at the secondary level, their departments, and start crafting those teachers' goals that Nick spoke to, and understanding how they can align them in this first year as best that they can, so that we can have that cascading effect and grow as a system, not only over three years, but in the next given year. So that's the learning lane, and I'll turn it over to the working lane.
The working. Ally Nelson.
It's like the kennel, the show, right? The working group. I'm up next. All right. The better place to work goal is around employee engagement. And you saw in the report that employee engagement can oftentimes be described as a symptom of success. So everything Mr. Reuter talks about in terms of the way in which our staff work around goals aligned to kids has a direct correlation back to employee engagement. One of the definitions of employee engagement that's very simplistic, but very much concise, is it's the extent to which people are personally invested in the success of an organization. And so as we look at employee engagement, this is a critically important goal. The business world has been working in employee engagement for a very long time, much longer than our world has, and they know that the more engaged their workforce is, the more innovation, the higher the productivity, the increases in performance, which in turn drive customer loyalty and internal and external loyalty. And so that equation extrapolated over to our world really comes from strong principal leadership to employee engagement to student engagement, which was the goal you just heard in the learning lane, and then what we get in return is students that have successful outcomes. So as we work in this goal, it's important that we're able to bring in very strong quantitative data that we can then use to deploy a process and garner in that qualitative data that helps build the root cause of why we have areas of strength and areas of improvement in our system. We use school perceptions as our vendor, which I like to call them a partner, to deploy the engagement survey. The survey is also in a satisfaction survey, and there is a distinction between engagement and satisfaction. As many of you know, an employee can come to work very satisfied but not be engaged in the work of the organization. So with school perceptions at our side, we were able to extrapolate out the engagement questions and pull them down to a site-based level so that we can begin to do that work at the level of the employee in the sites in which they have that direct leadership that's so critically important. And so if you'll move to the next slide there, this is our data from school perceptions, and this is baseline data for us, although we certainly did the school perception survey in '17. It was not disaggregated down to the site-based level. And so again, in working with them this summer, we were able to take that data around employee engagement and pull out by site that engagement levels. School perceptions is a scale of one to five, and so you see there in the gold color our district average, and then in the black bars, all the sites. This is very good data. We should be very proud of this data. This data is at or above the benchmark norms that school perception uses. It is very solid across the sites. You can see there that we have a very strong linear line when you look at our sites, and that we are in a good place around employee engagement. That doesn't mean it can't improve. One thing that I will also keep reiterating with the principals and the leaders that I do work with is employee engagement is never achieved, it's only ever improved. So we will continue to focus in in this area as it is critically important, but here again, you see our district data disaggregated for the school year. If you go back to the goal, you would see that every school that you see on here is below that 4.0 marker, so the expected growth for them is .2, which is what school perceptions has grounded in their statistical norming as within reason. And then our building here in the district office, we need to maintain or grow from the 4.12 that we are at. The survey, before I move to all the work, the last thing I would point out on the quantitative side here is the survey had 63% response rate. So that's a good response rate, but it's certainly not 100%, but this is who did the survey. As the sites do the work in the next couple of weeks, they're going to talk or bring in the voices of all staff. So they'll all be able to share in input as they do the work. So where we're at in terms of the actions is this data will now move to the site-based levels. In working with the principals and department leaders, we have a process where they will facilitate with the staff, and that includes all staff, not just teaching staff, but all staff, to gather in their voice, which again, if you go back, kind of drives down into that root cause of why are we where we're at in the quantitative data, what's the qualitative that follows that, into our areas of strength and our areas of improvement. And through a consensus-building process where the staff are both collaborating and empowered to help bring decisions to the forefront as to what work will be done, what strategies will be deployed, they will do that. We will now have a mid-year, and that mid-year will be targeted based upon the strategies in those areas of improvement that a site is doing. So it may differ based upon each site, there will be some consistent questions, but one site may be working on a different area based upon that staff feedback than another site would. And so we'll be doing a mid-year survey to target those. And so we'll be doing a mid-year survey to target those site strategies. The school improvement team plays a critical role in that they help progress monitor. So as you heard Mr. Cohen talk about their role, this is another integral piece of how they are modeling and monitoring the work for the whole site. And then we did have, at that 63% response rate, we had a couple departments. Food service and maintenance would be one, ones that we need to work with to develop a new baseline, to get in a larger number of responses from staff so that we can have normed data. So it's just a little bit of a different strategy for them that I'll be working with them on to make sure that we gather some baseline data in those departments. And then this is the goal four, which is around those values. We have our five values. I was going to quiz the board members, but I'll refrain, right? On our five values around equity, personal growth, innovation, stewardship, and well-being that are going to certainly, certainly as we do work, become embedded again in that cultural narrative and help drive the decisions around work that we do in our system. And so there is our annual goal. Again, we'll be working that into the survey through School Perceptions. Some of the work we've done to date is that we've done the values activities. So our staff have been exposed to the values activity. And those, right there, you see what behaviors do our employees engage in and exemplify the behavior? What current work aligns with this value? What's driven by it? These are not brand-new. They were in our work as they existed in Franklin. You heard how they were developed. And so there is work that aligns. It's that intentional alignment we are after at this point in time to help, again, create that embedment in the culture. And then what would success look like if we were living these values every day? Now, we're going to do some marketing. We're going to align our recognition system around the values. And we are currently seeking volunteers to join our values leader team that will help deploy the values action plan and develop questions for that mid-year survey and really, again, bring voice to how those values look in maintenance, how do they look in food service, how do they look in our teaching staff? So that's the work we've done to date in that goal.
Onto part of a better community. The great part with all of this work is seeing the values come out through each of these goal areas. And in meeting with some of the teams, we look at the values and we look at where do these values truly come out of this work? And in part of the Better Community, we really see that value of stewardship come out in serving other people and connecting with other people. So on the screen, you'll see our three-year goal of increasing our community partnerships to 200 and also that return rate of retaining those partnerships at night, remaining at 98% as measured by the Education for Employment Team. So we're currently at 120 community partnerships, and we want to grow that number over three years to 200. And then our annual goal is, again, growing that number from 120 to 168. Partnerships with that returning partner rate of 98% or higher. So those are, that's really our focus for Goal Five. As we shift onto the strategies that we're taking a look at, it's important as we explore this that we're sharing ownership, that people are meaningfully engaged in this process, and then also we're measuring pride through this work. So as we look at the slide, there are a number of things listed on this slide where we're working on increasing and growing partnerships, not only across the district but outside of the district. You'll notice recruiting additional partnerships with local meetings that are taking place throughout Franklin and beyond. Also, Rachel Fredericks is working on monthly communication updates about the Saber Business Alliance to them about what's going on in our schools. And then we have October 5th free on your calendar. You can join the Saber Business Alliance for the tailgate right before the Saber football game. So be sure if you can stop in and just check that out, that would be great. We're also planning future events. There are at least two other events that we're looking at around that seasonal change of the year, one midway through, around the wintertime and then also into the spring. And then we're actively involved in the last two on that slide with the Pathways to Your Future Night on October 10th and then the Education for Employment Team meeting that's coming up on the 23rd. So a busy month of October in terms of this strategy and supporting Goal Number Five. As we look at Goal Number Six, this is more qualitative in measure. If you take a look at the goal, we're looking at increasing pride in our schools as measured by our community and student survey data. And that's our broad goal, that's our three-year goal. And then as we look at our annual goal, we need to determine a baseline for that because we don't have a measure in place currently to measure pride. And so as we take a look at that, different district departments are coming together to define pride. You have to begin there. You have to have a definition of what that is before you can begin to have any kind of a measure with something. And so departments are coming together to define that, what that means for them, and also for the people within their department and beyond. We're examining the current state of pride and what that, again, what that looks like. And then what does it look like to gather feedback from people? We gather feedback in many different ways, but we've never really coordinated that across our system. And so we're looking at better ways to do that. Those teams then developing action plans on measuring growth, as you've heard that through these different strategies and through these different goals. We want to measure our progress and monitor how we're doing and then make adjustments every 45 to 90 days so that we're not just stuck on a goal and saying, well, I forgot what that goal was. It's something that we're constantly reviewing. It's a part of our everyday work. And then as we shift to this, this also becomes a part of what we're doing in our schools with building level administrators, gathering survey data from our students in terms of their level of pride and also parents as we monitor their sense of pride in the schools and what's happening across our system. So as you take a look at that, those are some of the things that I've spoken to already. Gathering feedback is going to be an important piece to this process in that we include as many people as we can as we gather that feedback. And then that action plan development, we're just in the beginning stages of that in this, in the month of September and into October with all of our department teams across the district. And then, again, moving into getting feedback from our parents and our students. We're looking at three to four times over the course of the year. We'd like to eventually do that more often, and what does that look like? And we have to figure out one of the best points in time to get feedback from people around what events, around what times of year, so that we get a good response rate from people, so that we can have something actionable to do as a result of that feedback.
So as you've heard, it's been a busy couple of months since we last talked about the coherence plan. Most of our, all of our sites, our school improvement teams have met at least once and if not multiple times and are kind of putting the finishing touches on the initial drafts of their school improvement plans that will be submitted by October 1st to the district. And then from a departmental standpoint, the departmental teams, most of them, a couple of them have already met with their teams, and most of them, however, will be meeting within the next two weeks with their teams to develop their departmental plans in alignment with the coherence plan goals. And so those will continue to get refined. It's important to really kind of state that the work of improvement is never done. You heard Ms. Elihausen talking about, we never achieve engagement, right? It's the same thing here. We never truly kind of achieve an end. The process of improvement is ongoing. And so we will continue to revise and adjust and monitor as we do this work, and we'll continue to come before the board with these updates. Kind of a next big checkpoint for us in terms of updating you will be on October 24th. Our principals will be here and will be sharing with you their school improvement plans and talking about that alignment back to the coherence plan. And so we'll have an opportunity to really engage with them around some of that work. With that, we'll welcome your questions.
So will we be hearing from departments also regarding goals and improvement plans for the...
Yeah, so certainly we'll find an opportunity to update the board on the work that the departments are doing. I think this initial step will be with the schools, and then we'll engage with the board down the road around how we'll update you on what's happening with the departments.
And my sense is that you, there's a lot of teams, as you mentioned, a lot of teachers involved. When is team time? How do we fit team time into the workday?
Yeah, great question. We try to be flexible, right? We want to certainly have enough time to engage teams. So some of the teams meet during the school day, some of them meet outside the school day. It's really up to the team in terms of what works for their schedule and that we accommodate that accordingly, so.
And then also, in looking at the document that you provided under Better Place to Learn, Core Strategies Number Two talked about the state of student discipline. I didn't see that being covered anywhere. Is that just kind of not going to be addressed? Or it's here, but I didn't hear you talk about it?
Yeah, and maybe I'll let Dr. Miller...
Sure. It's definitely a strategy we're approaching this year, but in the last 45 years, we've not initiated it.
Can I just comment on that, too? You haven't initiated it, but in the report, how will students and parents understand the discipline procedures? How, you know, how will you, because right now, discipline is, you know, only in the handbook or, and we can't guarantee that everyone reads that. But how will you make sure that they understand the discipline?
So the strategy really is part of the three-year plan. So by third year, we'll have a system-wide approach to discipline. This first year, we're really just getting baseline information about what we do in this district with regard to student discipline. So over time, as we develop that system-wide approach to discipline, we would most definitely be communicating that to our students and to our families. But that is not going to happen this year. This year is essentially a year of study around what we're currently doing, what is our ideal state, what's our current state, and then developing a plan in which to get there.
And I just have one more area that I have a little bit more trouble getting my head around, which is the pride one. And I guess you probably, I hope you, and I wasn't real sure where that came from because when I read the thing at the top, I'm not sure what that is, but it says Better Community, Franklin Public Schools is part of a better community that shares ownership, is meaningfully engaged and proud. So I guess be focused on proud then. Is that just kind of where the group went?
Right, right. So if you recall, you were actually a part of that meeting, and I think it was in this part of this room. Actually, there was a chart up over there. And it came out quite clear by the team that we want to focus on pride, that we want people in this community to be proud of their schools. So it was a strong emphasis that came out. The group, when developing the goal, talked about going in other directions, but we were brought back to being authentic in terms of what we heard from that team and focused on pride. I know you're proud of the school district. I know you're proud of your community. That's important.
I think that the group felt that having pride would create unity between the school and the community. That was one of the main focuses.
And I would also add, just being familiar with the work that Mr. Feckler's leading around engaging some of the departments around this discussion, those other pieces of that Better Community description are certainly part of the conversation as they talk about pride. And so as they work to kind of define pride, they're having conversations about meaningful engagement and that if we feel pride in our schools, that we're going to increase our engagement level with the school. So they're working kind of through that holistic definition and not just focusing on that one piece.
And this area also has the communications manager mentioned. So I'm guessing communications is going to be a big part of that, although I didn't see that really come through again in your work so far, but we would be expecting to see more of that?
So Ms. Bowden is one of the members of the team that Mr. Feckler's been working with as they work through that definition of pride and start to think about potential action steps and communication. Certainly that voice is at the table in terms of that work, so.
So we can expect maybe to see that down the road?
I would say we're going to, we'll continue to iterate, right?
Forty-five days, it keeps coming back.
You got it.
Okay. All right.
There is a strong link to that student engagement piece as well when we look at that student engagement goal with focus groups, focus groups of students, getting feedback from them, being able to speak into how they're measuring their engagement in school, what they feel about schools, but then also what's their sense of pride in the school, too? So those are coming up, actually, the month of October, November, as we look at that work that's ahead. We haven't started that yet, but that's on the horizon.
And I guess I would just also add, we're really proud of the work of the teams that's occurred. This has been a big step for us. There's been a lot of learning in terms of the work that's occurred in August and September. And our administrative team and our improvement teams and really our whole staff have really embraced the work of improvement and the work that we're doing. And as you heard me say, we're going to go slow to go fast with some of this work, but certainly we understand the importance of doing it well and doing it right. And so we're taking steps to do that. But I really am, and we really are as an admin team, just very proud of the work that our entire staff is doing around this because it involves some new learning for them and some new processes, and they've embraced it. So it's been really positive the first couple of weeks of this school year.
I would think that student engagement number is definitely a number you want to see grow. And are you looking at extracurricular involvement and percentages and things like that? Or is this through surveys and direct student feedback? Or how do you, how do you think you're going to engage or measure student engagement? Can you see an engagement level rise by a kid not getting involved in extracurricular activities, but yet being more, I would, yes, I would think, but how are you going to?
So you think about our second goal around college and career readiness, the career readiness indicators at the high school level around co-curricular activities. The middle and elementary level, it's about co-curricular activities and experiences. So some of the questions, I think when we think of engagement in schools, we right away think, oh, I'm really into something that my teacher's talking about, and I can read some sample questions that students are asked. My teacher makes me feel my schoolwork is important, right? So that kids then reflect and answer yes or no on those type, that type of question. I have a best friend at school. So you think about the social, emotional aspect of school and how are we bringing kids together and better understand our differences but our similarities so that we're proud of our school, we're proud of the work we do. One of the questions, I feel safe at school. So we have a lot of work we're doing, and you've heard the word intentional lots, and it's bringing it back together. Because to Ms. Elihausen's point, if our employees are engaged and satisfied at work, they're going to do a better job every day, and they're going to do things like the adults at this school make me feel like I'm cared about. So a student now feels cared about because their teacher's engaged in their work and satisfied with their work, and they are showing that through me. And now I'm going to report I'm engaged, and if I'm engaged in school, my academic outcomes are going to be higher. So all three of the areas are interconnected, though it might not seem like it when you see it on a board like that. We're doing intentional work to keep it connected because they all have ramifications on our overall success as a school community.
And to Dr. Miller's point, this is just information gathering, baseline stuff, and so, I mean, we're so fresh into it, but it'd be very interesting to see how this goes throughout, through over the year.
Yeah. And all the schools are setting improvement plan goals and strategies around that engagement goal. So on the 24th, when they come, you're going to hear from them in terms of these are the action steps they're taking at the building level to improve engagement of students.
Also on student engagement, under Goal One, SMART Goal One, student engagement, it said that building principals will collaborate with each other to develop a consistent understanding of student engagement. So if you have to have, develop an understanding for staff or for principals, don't you have to also do that for students in order for them to answer a Gallup poll? Don't they have to have a correct understanding of student engagement?
That's a great point. And that's where some of the focus groups that Mr. Feckler was talking about come into play, right? Gives us an opportunity to gauge kind of student perspective as to, here's the data, here's what you're saying, tell us a little more about that. What do you mean by that? How did you approach kind of these questions? What are you thinking about? That all helps inform us in terms of that student mindset. And much like we're engaging our employees around their own engagement and how we're going to build their capacity, we need to engage our own students around their level of engagement and have their voice at the table and have them be part of the solution in terms of how do we grow engagement overall.
One other question. You know, this is, you know, this is big work, it's big ideas. And then I think about, you know, we've got this big new building going up over there, and we've got 4K coming down the, how does that fit in here, you know? We only, some could read this and not even know that we're putting in a brand-new building and we're starting 4K, but it's not, where is it? Or how's it fit with something like this?
We talk frequently about the 80/20. So the idea that 20% of our work is really dialed into strategic actions that are moving the coherence plan forward, and 80% of our work is the other things that we need to do to operate a comprehensive school district and make sure that we're attending to needs and moving the district forward. So we try to kind of balance our work in terms of that mindset and think about, you know, we need to be really intentional about our strategic time and the time we're working to advance these things daily, and we need to be aligned. And at the same time, there are operational details that we need to attend to. And hopefully, the improvement mindset, the tools, the tactics, the processes, the way of thinking that we're kind of intentionally engaging in the 20% right now start to s-... start to spill over into that eighty percent. And so, as we do the daily work, we start to think in an improvement mindset and say, well, here's this system or process that we're working through, how do we make that better? Or here's this problem we're facing today, how might we solve that in a real intentional and comprehensive way? So, we're trying to build our capacity as a group of leaders and as a district around that twenty percent, really intentionally practicing those strategic actions while still doing kind of the work you're talking about that we have to, to be a district and operate.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you for your work, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Item eight B is the district administrator goals presentation. Dr. Miller?
I just have a short presentation, but I don't want to get intense. You have to do this. Sorry. I bet he can. I bet he can. I bet you can. I bet you're getting steps on. I don't know. I go like this. I think you have two races pretty often. Andy Clicker. Okay. Well, I'd really like to begin just by thanking my colleagues for the work that they've done around the coherence plan. I'd like to thank the directors, I'd like to thank Mr. Feckler for his leadership, and then all of our principals, because what you heard tonight wouldn't be possible without them really, really putting in a lot of effort since we began this process, really just in late spring. So, as I've conveyed previously, it's been about ten years since this school district has had any kind of formal plan for our improvement to guide our success. And we've been really fortunate, because we've had a really strong leadership in this district, and we've had excellent teachers that have allowed us to be a high-performing district. However, I can only imagine how good we'd be today if we'd had a structured plan for our success in this district that includes district goals over a three-year period of time that we track over time and make sure that we're flexible about so that we can get better. As a district administrator, my role is to ensure that our plan, the district's coherence plan, means something. It has to mean something, not just to the leaders, but to everyone in the organization. It's my responsibility to ensure that we do what we said we'd do. So, what's in that plan, we're gonna do it. And that we succeed, of course. My goals presentation this evening focuses on that. It also focuses on the areas that I would personally like to further develop as a leader, given the feedback that I received from the board and from the staff last year. The coherence plan, have you, as you've seen, is a highly structured plan that includes our core values and our annual scorecard of goals and strategies that measure our progress. My first goal as a district administrator is to ensure that we achieve those specific goals and strategies by June of 2019. The manner in which I do this is really important. There are two important actions that I will need to take this year to ensure that we achieve the goals of our annual scorecard. My first step in doing this was to make sure that we have the correct structures in place to succeed. I did this early this summer by reorganizing our leadership team and the responsibilities of our leaders, so that Mr. Cohen could move into a position of Director of Strategic In this role, Mr. Cohen's responsible for supporting daily the work that we are doing to ensure alignment of our plan to the work in our schools. Without alignment and support, the coherence plan, like many strategic plans in many organizations, would end up on the shelf. The second important thing I will do to ensure our success is to meet regularly with the directors and the principals. During these meetings, I'll carefully monitor through questioning and discussion our success in achieving our goals and strategies that we're all responsible for. In order to successfully lead others, I have set specific performance goals for myself to improve as a leader. These goals are based on the feedback I receive from the board and my 360-degree evaluation. My first performance goal is to increase my rating regarding staff engagement from sixty-three percent effective, or highly effective, to seventy-five percent effective or highly effective, again, as measured by the 360-degree evaluation. My second and third goal relate to my evaluation from the board. It's my goal to continue to be rated as overall effective or highly effective in all the areas of my professional practice rubric, and to increase my rating to effective or highly effective in actively seeking communication from the community. My last slide returns us to the reason why I've set goals, why our leadership team has set goals, and why you have set goals as a board, and why we now have a coherence plan, and that's to get better. For my love and for every other Franklin Public School student to have a better place to learn, for our employees to have a better place to work, and for Franklin community to have a better place to live. I'm looking forward to working with our principals, having them here on October 24th to interact with you about their school improvement plans. I'm really looking forward to working with Mr. Cohen and hearing from him every week, how we're doing in terms of our alignment with our coherence plan, and the other directors as well. So, I want to thank you for your support, and I'm very confident that we're gonna have a good year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
Paper copy of those goals.
Thank you. And last year, you had an update on your goals. You don't have that mid-year, mid-year, obviously.
Item eight C is the SWSA, which is the Southwest School Alliance Legislative Agenda. That's with myself and Dr. Miller, and you had a draft copy of that in your board packet, which we recommend that you open. Dr. Miller, we did not get an update, did we?
No, we did not. As you can see in the draft, there's still some pieces of this that the group is working on. And I thought perhaps I'd get a draft today, but I did not, a revised draft, but I did not.
So, I don't know if you want to start, or, Dr. Miller and I, we, Dr. Miller tries to attend almost every one of these meetings, which are in Elbrook School District, once a month in the mornings, and I try to go to as many as I can as a board representative each, what do we have? Is it four, it's not forty, it's like thirty-six districts or so?
Thirty-six, thirty-two, thirty-six, something like that.
So, each district has a superintendent that attends, and then they try to have any board member attend. So, if any board member every year wanted to attend, they're at seven and, seven-thirty in the morning, so it's kind of hard if you work to get there and go to work. And so, what SWSA does is formulate a legislative agenda to bring to the state, and they work with the superintendents and board members to bring that forth, and that's what this draft that you have is for the coming school year.
Right, right.
So.
You'll see that there are eight priority areas that have been identified by this collective group of superintendents and board members, and hopefully, you had a chance to take a quick look at what it is that they would be advocating for, and I guess Ms. Evans and I would really like to know if you have any strong feelings about any of these, so that when we're at the table and we're asked to speak on behalf of this board, or convey, you know, our opinion, it reflects, you know, this board as a whole. So, the first being develop a comprehensive, predictable, and sustainable funding system for the public school district students. So, this is probably a priority that's been in place for several years, and as you know, and I sent you some information last year about the Blue Ribbon Commission and the work that was being done there. There have been efforts over the years to change things, and things move very, very slowly in this area. But there continues to be a lot of passion around making sure that this does change over time, because it is getting more and more challenging for some school districts.
Yeah, I just want to just say that on the second page of this, you know, you have a short list, a list of what these eight priorities are. At the last meeting, they divided up the entire room between board members and superintendents, and they asked each group, what do you think the order of these priorities should be? And every group was different as to what they thought the priorities should be. But the group I was in thought priority one basically covered everything in this group, almost everything, whereas every other group was, it was totally different, the order they put these in. So, that's why this is a draft. What's gonna happen is, they took all the information they gathered, and they'll put out their priority, the group's total priorities. So, but as Dr. Miller said, we'll have your input, if you have any, as to what you think is important when we go back, so.
When we're looking at legislative priority one about the predictable, sustainable funding system, from what I've seen with our budgets here, we don't seem to be one of those struggling districts, are we?
Mr. Mills, you may want to comment on that.
Or is Jim such a magician that we don't see it?
And if you look on page three of that document, it really explains what this is.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I was there, and I read through it, and, Mr. Mills.
We're not one of the struggling districts that's looking to change the funding system in Wisconsin. We're doing well with the funding system in Wisconsin as it exists. We spent a long time working on getting our budget in order and our operations in order and in order to live within that system. But there are districts, especially with declining enrollment, with the way the system works, that are losing money faster than really their expenses are going away. So, that's where some of that comes from, on looking for, that those districts are looking for different ways to receive money from the state and from taxes that's more sustainable or even for them.
So, we're not looking for an overall rewrite of what's happening. Certain districts just need help, and they need the state to recognize that and move to help them, not necessarily just increase everybody's income ten percent, for example.
Right, right. They're looking for.
We take it, I understand, but.
Ten percent, hundred percent, we would take that.
And is that somewhat attributed to where we were in ninety-three when this began? I mean, we were probably a higher-spending district, and we retained that as things, everything moved in sync? Would that be a true statement, or a trend, or?
No, we've cut, I think it's six and a half million dollars over the years to get under the revenue limits. We had a lot of tough years where we had to do that, so it hasn't been a cakewalk to get to this point. We've had trouble, and we've worked to overcome that and bring our budget into line. But I can see that a district that lost students every year to some degree for fifteen years or so just has nowhere else to go, because the way the system works, they don't necessarily save any money. And as an example, if we lost a hundred students, we would need to cut, let's say, a million dollars from our budget, but those hundred students come from thirteen grades, they're across seven buildings, and we may not save almost anything. No staffing, a little bit of paper here and there, but we have to cut a million dollars. So, that's what those districts are facing if they go year after year after year in that spot. So, that's why they're looking for relief from that piece of the revenue limit.
Priority two is kind of a political piece right now, if you're watching some of the political campaigning that's going on. Superintendent Evers is in public with requesting ninety percent reimbursement for special ed. So, we have continued to be poorly funded in this area. As you can see, twenty-six percent doesn't nearly come close to what is needed. So, that might be an interesting one you want to learn more about, and we get on, local control is always important to school boards. Mental health and priority four, that you can see they're still working on that piece, but there's certainly a strong desire to have more funding to schools to provide more mental health services to students. They're still working on the other pieces that are identified there.
No, they've identified full-day 4K. Is that what we're leaning towards, or haven't we gotten to that point yet?
No, we're not leaning towards that, and that's, we're working through all the information we have right now, but it does emphasize the importance of early learning, which is why we're bringing a proposal to the board for 4K. Priority five relates to a decline in the number of teachers that we have now in the system. Priority six relates to vouchers. That's not a new issue for us. And then the last two priorities, seven relates to just engaging in the cycle and expanding the education academy, which was an opportunity for board members to learn about school budgets. And they did that academy, I think, in 2017, and they want to do that again, so you can really learn about how school budgets work. So, those are more development, that's more of a development goal or priority. So, it's important work. I think it's really great that we're at the table. I appreciate that Ms. Evans is there with me, and I do believe that this organization does have influence. So, if there's anything you'd like us to know about this, I really would appreciate you making us aware.
On number, let's see, the one on vouchers, number six, there's a lot of talk about trying to get it on your tax statement when it comes in, that these vouchers are listed, so that taxpayers realize how much money from your school district goes to the private schools.
That'd be a good idea.
That's what they're trying to do. So, if you want to look these over at home, and you could let us know, I think our next meeting is next week, or two weeks?
Sure.
But if anything really stood out to you, that is important to you, let us know. There are some districts that are very gung-ho on legislative issues, and you'll know that.
On number, let's see, the one on vouchers, number six, there's a lot of talk about trying to get it on your tax statement when it comes in that it, that these vouchers are listed so that taxpayers realize how much money from your school district goes to the private schools. That's what they're trying to do. So if you want to look these over at home and you could let us know, I think our next meeting is next week or two weeks. But if anything really stood out to you that is important to you, let us know. There are some districts that are very gung ho on legislative issues and you'll know that when you do the resolutions, you could see they repeat every year, like Wauwatosa or Shorewood.
Gainesville isn't everything.
Yeah.
Any other comments or any questions?
All right, thank you. Item 8D, the treasurer's report is available in the Board Docs library. And 8E, the Forest Park construction update, Mr. Milzer.
Yes, in the music area at Forest Park, that's the part of the building that's farthest along. All of the painting is done in there, the ceiling has gone in. Next week, the lights will start going in there. Cabinets are in, sinks are in, so it's really starting to look almost finished in there, which is really great to see. In that area, in the restrooms, the floor tile is in, the wall tile is in, it looks great. In the gym, they're finishing the painting, the walls are painted, they're putting the striping on the walls as well as painting the ceiling. In Area C, they're starting drywall, that's the southeast classroom wing. The learning steps that we saw in the commons, they've poured the student access stairs and they've done about half of the learning steps and they'll be finishing that next week. The windows are being installed on the northwest side of the building at this point. And in the north classroom wing, they're installing plumbing and electrical in the walls and that was the one that was kind of wide open when we looked at it. The walls are all in there. Outside, the curbs for the visitor parking will be going in next week. That's kind of right across from the ECC and many trees have been planted. I don't know if you noticed on your way in, but when they delivered those, it looked like we were running a small garden center out in front of the school there. They've planted a lot of trees and I think it's going to look fantastic. And something that you wouldn't see unless you're looking for it, they've poured a concrete dam in the back on the far side of our wetland area to keep the water in that area essentially. So the forms are still up on that, still curing, but that was a big step in getting that one in.
Was that planned?
Yes. Yeah, we didn't talk about it much, but it was part of the plan and they've been waiting for better weather to get that in. And that's my report for this month.
Is that with regulation or a spillway or something and then how will that be?
Right, it's holding the water back.
Right.
And so that it spills out slowly. That's the function of it.
Only when it rises to a certain spot that it'll go over.
Right.
It's passive, it's not, you can't operate the gate or anything?
No, no, can't operate it, no hydroelectric power.
Oh, because maybe powered, huh? Okay.
Thank you. Item nine, school board liaison reports. We have 90, the personnel and policy, policy 6721 copyright applications to instructional materials. Mr. Nielsen.
Thank you. We do have one policy coming before the board tonight, as stated by Ms. Evans here, policy 6721. Just some minor modifications regarding copyright law changes and so, I don't know if Dr. Miller wants to chime in anymore on that.
So this policy's here because it's a mandatory policy and it's now older than five years and we're kind of to that point where we're really in good shape with our policies and we're reviewing them more regularly, so that's exciting. There were no recommended changes to the policy itself, so you'll see, we're just asking that you reaffirm the policy language. There were a few changes in the rules. Our school librarian researched this and recommended these changes as you see them within the rules. I'm noticing that there's probably one more change I'd like to make in the rules. 11, it says district staff shall consult copyright guidelines for schools. I'm not entirely sure if that's the actual name of a book, so I would like to reword this that it would say district staff shall consult copyright guidelines for schools for guiding individual application of this policy. Each building shall have copyright information, that is easily, instead of eliminating the word copy because I don't know if that's the exact name of a book, but the intent here is that they have the information they need. So I would just make that minor change within the rules to what's in front of you currently. But yeah, that's really where we're at with that. It's one of our most exciting policies because I knew you couldn't wait to talk about it.
So I'm looking for a motion to reaffirm policy 6721. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you. And then item 9B is board liaison reports. Do we have any liaison reports?
I will say that the foundation has their consignment sale this Saturday at Robinwood. Would that be more appropriate than an announcement?
No, you're right. It's liaison.
Yes, so I think they have a lot of sellers, they're looking for buyers, so there's lots of stuff if you have grandkids looking for deals.
For community and governmental relations, I visited Goodwill's Community Day, which is, oh, did I interrupt you?
No.
Oh, okay.
We were talking about not having grandchildren. Oh, I'm sorry. We were a little sidetracked.
Oh, that's okay.
I apologize.
That's okay. I visited Goodwill's Community Day on September 13th. That was the Goodwill down on Riverwood, I think it's Riverwood, down in Franklin. And it was an open community day and I toured the facility and learned about their many programs and how they employ people with special needs and I didn't know a lot of that, how much they employ people. And, you know, there was a rumor that went out a few years ago about not donating to Goodwill because so much of their giving that you give to them goes to the top and it's really not true. And their CEO is a woman and that rumor that went out said it was a man and he just takes everything. Well, it really isn't true. They do a lot of good work at Goodwill. And one of the interesting things, I like to ask questions when I go to things like that and I said, do you ever get any donations that are strange? Because I knew they did. And they said, yeah, we got a ham once that was really coagulated and really, you know, people hide things in all their donations and that was really bad. Sometimes they get boxes of live animals just put outside by the door, like chickens. And one time a man was moving and he left a car, he just left his car. He was going out of the country and just dropped his car off. They have a lot of evacuations because people put grenades, they hide them, a lot of grenades in their clothes and things, so every time there's a grenade, everyone has to leave. But they have stacks and stacks and stacks of everything they get every day and they sort through every single piece and they go through it really quickly. It's amazing and it's like professional shoppers that go through to see what they can sell there, what they can't goes to another site where they weigh everything and you buy it by the pound and it's just amazing. They do have some trash that they have to get rid of, but it, and they sort everything on their, on their floor by color. All their shirts and everything are sorted by color. You don't see that in any other store. So it was interesting. And then the other, the other community and governmental relations, I attended my volition Franklin meeting, which is always interesting because they partner with our schools. And then Dr. Miller and I had a meeting with the mayor and we talked about, we do that once a year, we talked about future growth in the community and tax issues among the things we talked about and we'll be hearing as the board will be hearing about a future TID next month, I believe, from Mr. Milzer as part of our growth. Any other community and governmental relations?
I had.
I mean, you know what I mean, liaison.
Yeah. I had a meeting with, at the zoo, Lori and I are members of the Zoological Society and we had a dinner and at the dinner, the gentleman sitting next to me was a controller of Steel Solutions in Franklin here and I asked him if he was partnered with the school and he wasn't really sure, so I got his information, but he said what they were really looking for is people who could do drafting. He said, we'll train them and in a couple of years, they can make some real good money and he threw a number out, but I'm not sure if that's starting salary or two years down the road or whatever. And so I have his information, I pass it on to Judy and hopefully we can get him to be a partner.
Thank you. Then we move on to 9C, school and community engagement visits. Mrs. Larson, you had one.
The homecoming parade?
That counts.
A good time was had by all. There was a lot of candy left.
Well, that's because of the rain, so we'll use that and.
Alan wears a wonderful straw skirt and I want you to.
Dress skirt.
Dress skirt.
So also at the parade was Alan and myself and Mrs. Witkowski and it would have, we would have had others had we not had a rain out, so that was a very nice event. And who wants to go next?
I did attend the first meeting of the PTO group at Pleasant View and it was, of course, lots of, new parents were there and they, one particular new parent really did share somewhat of her, you know, she wants to, you know, thinks we can do a better job of communicating with new parents because she didn't know how and it's more about stuff like, what's the first day going to be like or where do I drop my kid off? And I know Pleasant View had, they have this coffee group that they try and hook new parents with the first day of school, but they don't know where to stage it because they have a couple of different places and she missed it because of the other location, but just little things like that. If she could have contacted a parent, an experienced parent, she could have got her questions answered.
So you're speaking of new parents to the district, new parents.
Well, it can be new parents to the district, you know, kindergarten, she was a kindergarten parent, but there also were a number of parents that were new to the district. So, and I guess it's not a one event thing either when you think about it because the school year has, there's new stuff all along, you know, the first dance or the first ever. It's just, we could do a better job of working with them the first year, not just the first day of school. I mean, she mentioned that they did have some meeting for new parents, but that's not the same kind of information as how the school works on a, you know, day-to-day basis. And she felt like she missed out on the first day of school because she dropped her kid out there, but they're all taking pictures over there. It's not earth-shattering stuff, but it's important to parents and it's just, it would be a nice touch, so.
I would echo something similar at the high school with incoming families, that you get a lot of that coming in the ninth grade at the high school and getting them on the email, they didn't get on the email list until, I think, like the first day of school or something when their, when the child's activated or whatever in the system. I'm not really sure the whole story, but it seemed like there was a conversation where there were, there was some communication that could have gone out before the school year started, so that maybe is another good example of more communication is better than less communication in that regard. I'll get some more specifics on that, but it was something with a new family coming in and not getting the emails right away.
Thanks for sharing that.
I've got a few here and I'm going to share because that's what we're supposed to be doing, so. And I do want to say back about the homecoming parade, I want to thank Mr. Gary Birch for giving us his car because it was his two nights in a row, so that was very nice of him and he is one of our bus drivers, so that's very nice of him to share. And then I also attended the, I attended the football game and not really because I ended up working in the concessions and Mr. Nielsen also worked in the concessions that night with the Saber Spirit Club, so we did community service that night. And I want to say the Saber Spirit Club, they are great. They worked so hard that night, a great group of people. It's like a machine, just the way they worked that night and just really happy, pleasant people. You don't get to watch the game, you're just working very hard and I'm sure it's like that with all the concessions, but that's a really hard night because it's so busy. I mean, it was like, I was there for three quarters and I did the hot dogs and I, I think we did at least 400, 450 hot dogs at least during that time and the pizza, you sold 40, 40 whole pizzas. So it was, it was a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of great people. And Mrs. Nielsen, she's still volunteering with the Saber Spirit Club and just like you with no children, so that's, that's really impressive, so.
Well, and a lot of with that stuff, people that have kids in clubs, they like to have to work at concession stand and do the fundraiser, like, oh, I'm working this Tuesday or whatever. You get out of it what you put into it and I will tell you that night, I had a blast. It was just a lot of fun and we had a great crew, as you saw. Two people working a window, one doing the cash drawer and it was just, everyone had their thing going and it was, it was a great time. So I would, I would just say to the parents that are out there, get involved, have fun doing it, it's rewarding.
And then on 924, I attended Life of an Athlete at the high school, which was put on by volition with partnering with Franklin High School. And I attended the student one in the day, Dr. Miller was there, that was with John Underwood and there were about 170 students that attended. And then at night, I was there and Mr. Gamble was there also, we had about 80 community members. But he had a great message about the impact of your health with mental, physical and your well-being, spiritual well-being and even afterwards at night, he had about 10 parents that wouldn't leave, they just, they just stayed there and kept talking to him and he likes to talk. So hopefully in the future, we'll have more events like that where the community will keep attending. Did you want to say anything about it?
That was a very good presentation and his message was, could resonate well with those, human performance was the part of the advertisement for it that didn't come through as strong and how you can, through diet, through exercise, doing right things, you know, improve your, not only mental, but physical performance.
My last one was this morning, I volunteered at the senior health fair at the library. We educated seniors about opioid misuse and medication safety, also with volition, so we did about 200 surveys with senior citizens and they had started at 9:00 AM and they were there at 7:00 AM. So it was, they're ready to go, had to get their flu shots, so it was a lot of people. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. Send, item 10, I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, sub 1, sub D, to consider strategies for crime detection and prevention. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, Mr. Gamble, was that? Second by Mr. Gamble, any discussion? Hearing none, all is, oh, can I have a roll call please?
Yes. Mrs. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Gamble.
Aye.
Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen.
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Aye.
And I say yes.
Motion carries unanimously, so we are now going into closed session at 7:28, 38 and there was no action taken in closed session. So item 11 is school board debriefing and because it's so late, I don't think we'll go into, we were going to talk about how goals relate, but I think we'll wait till our next meeting because it's so late. Is there any, any school debriefing, school board debriefing tonight? Okay, I'll move on to item 12, future agenda items. We have an at-risk report scheduled for October 10th, community, education and recreation department report scheduled for October 10th, the enrollment and staffing report scheduled for November 14th, and the 2018-19 budget update and approval for October 24th, and the 4K proposal for October 24th. And anything else? All right, then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned at 8:39.